We're live and now recording.
Thank you, Katie. Can we be your role copy?
Yes, Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bletheld.
I'm here.
Ms. Kiyabachi.
Here.
Mr. Frank. Mrs. Hayman.
Here.
Ms. Carrie and I guess.
Here.
Dr. Morris.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg.
Here.
Sachi Meita.
Here.
And Blake Zimmerman.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent, and two student board reps this evening.
Thanks, Katie. All right, we're now going to do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm so thankful that we have our students here from Lower Gwinnett to help us this evening. I want to welcome all of our guests here this evening, especially our guests from Lower Gwinnett Elementary. And I did just want to take a moment before we begin just to offer our thoughts for the families in Nashville. So we just want to take a moment for that. Thank you. Thank you. All right, looking at our agenda, first list out our prior meetings. On March 6th, the Board had a regular public board meeting. March 13th, we had a policy committee meeting. March 14th, we had a Board Curriculum and Technology Committee meeting, as well as a Finance Committee Budget Workshop. March 20th, we had a Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And March 21st, we had a Communications Committee meeting. Next, we list out our upcoming meetings. On April 10th, we'll have a regular public board meeting. April 17th is Communications Committee meeting, as well as a Board Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. April 18th is the Finance Committee Budget Workshop. The 24th is our next work session. And May 1st will be our next regular public board meeting. All right, we'll now move on to presentations. Jim?
Thank you. So tonight, we have the final presentation from one of our schools. We know we've been trying to get somebody in once a month to see all some really fun things and important things going on in schools. And as Ms. Knopka led her crew in this evening, she looked at me and said, "Get ready." And I said, "Well, I want to look at what's coming at us right now. I don't think I was ready enough." But I'm really looking forward to it. And it's a pleasure to welcome to the boardroom and to this meeting, the team from Lower Gwinnett and Ms. Knopka. You want to do your introductions?
Good evening, everyone. We're excited to be here tonight. I wasn't joking when I said to Dr. Chris Field, "Get ready." Because you're going to just be amazed by our third grade superstars tonight. So tonight, we are going to have five third grade students from Lower Gwinnett present to you their biography projects. Students at Lower Gwinnett in third grade worked really hard on reading and collecting and researching facts about famous or influential people. Then they put their facts together and worked on a writing project and wrote an informational piece that they then turned into the presentation that you're going to see tonight. And without further ado, I'll introduce each student now, and then they'll come up separately to do their presentation. So tonight, as Roberto Clemente, we have Gabe Vasquez. Tonight, we have, as Dwayne "The Rock" Johnson, Campbell Urkel. As Barack Obama, we have Amy Chang. As George Washington, we have Pierce Dowdy. And as Walt Disney, we have Cameron Cissé. So first up. First up, Roberto Clemente is going to stay on base, and I'll have everybody else on the seat.
Everybody, nice to meet you. Welcome up. Hello, my name is Roberto Clemente, and I'm going to Nicaragua to take supplies to the earthquake. I was born August 18, 1934, in Carolina, Puerto Rico. My dad made it really important to go to school. I loved playing baseball as a kid, and I was very good at it, too. When I was 14, I was playing baseball with my friend, and a baseball scout saw me. He invited me to try out for the softball team in San Juan. When I was in high school, I was a baseball star. I hit with power. I had the nickname "Molten." I was also on the high school track team. People said I was so good at the javelin, so I could go to the Olympics. I tried out for the Puerto Rican Winter League and got on the San Truce travel. This was the first time I was paid to play. A Brooklyn Dodger scout saw me, and I was sent to their minor league team. The Dodgers minor league team put me at shortstop. I played well, but they benched me. I found out later that they didn't want other teams to know how good I was, because the other teams would get me to play for them. I still came to my game. I would play well, but they benched me. But it was too late. The Pirates recruited me. In the winter before I went to Pittsburgh, I went home to Puerto Rico. While I was there, I was in a car accident, and I got a back injury. It sometimes bothers me when I am playing baseball. In 1960, I helped the Pirates win their first World Series since 1927. I met Vera Zabala, and we went back to Puerto Rico in 1963. Me got married in 1964. I was three times Roberto Junior, Luis, and Amike. In 1971, I won another World Series. And this year, 1972, I got to 3,000 hits. I'd gone to Nicaragua one month ago and heard about an orphan who had lost both legs in an accident. I helped the Winter League team raise money for him. Sadly, Roberto died on that. His body has never been found. Roberto made such a big difference in so many people's lives. His family helped open the Roberto Clemente Sports Center. They give to honor the legacy of greatness in sports and in helping others. Roberto was the first Latin American to be inducted into the National Baseball Hall of Fame. In recognition of his work on and off the field, Roberto was awarded the Presidential Medal of Freedom in 2003. In conclusion, Roberto helped people from action off the diamond, and is great on it.
Dwayne "The Rock" Johnson. Okay.
Do you like famous actors? You might know me as one. I'm Dwayne Johnson. I was born on May 2nd, 1972, in Hayward, California. My father was a famous wrestling star. I went to school in New Zealand, Tennessee, Georgia, and Hawaii. My dad's name is Rocky. My mom's name is Atta. My dad was born in Canada. I got the role of the Scorpion King in 2001. I played the role Maui in the movie "Mauna." I first started acting on Saturday Night Live. I first started wrestling in 1996. Many knew me from my action movies. When I was 24 years old, I joined the WWE. I became one of the biggest stars in Hollywood. When I was Maui, I sang my first song. Here are some character traits that many people use to describe me. Kind, because I donated $1 million to the University of Miami. Talented, because I am in a lot of movies that are fun, have action, and are scary movies I've been in. Funny, because I have been in funny movies and played funny characters. What am I doing right now? I am still alive. What I'm doing is starring in movies. In 2019, I was the highest-paid movie star in the world. I'm a dad to three daughters. The most recent movies that I've starred in were Black Adam and DC League of Super Pets. My first role in a movie was "The Mummy Returns." In 2006, I created the Dwayne Johnson Rock Foundation. I went to high school in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. I'm the national spokesperson for After School All-Stars. Thank you.
All right, next up, former president Barack Obama.
The fresh breeze in Hawaii. Hi, my name is Barack Obama. You've probably heard of me. Yep, you've guessed it. I'm Barack Obama and the 44th President of the United States. And yes, I was born in Honolulu, Hawaii, in 1961, August 4th. Forty-four is an easy number to remember, four and four. So please take that and remember Barack Obama, 44th President of the US. Cool, thanks. Why is great? Why is a lot of islands? And most of the islands are actually ranked high for quality of life and safety? Well, you could live there. But back to me. So it seems like I'm a cool guy, right? Well, just wait, you'll learn a lot about me. My mother was Ann Dunham, and my father was Barack Obama Senior. My mom was from Kansas, and my dad was from Kenya. I went to college in Columbia University, and I graduated from college in 1983. In 1988, I went to Harvard Law School. Actually made a great first impression at Harvard. I went to elementary school in Honolulu, Hawaii, and in Jakarta, Indonesia. I moved to Illinois when I finished school. Right now, I'm doing a lot of golf. In fact, I've golfed 333 rounds a ball. I've also learned a deal with Netflix to produce a set of films and series called Higher Ground Productions. I'm still interested in politics, though. I have two daughters, Malaya and Sasha. I was elected to my first term in the Illinois Senate in 1996. I was elected to the US Senate in 2004. For four years, I was the only African-American in the Senate. In 2007, I announced that I would run for president in 2008. In the 2008 election, I won, so I became the 44th President of the United States. In 2009, I was awarded the Nobel Peace Prize for my efforts to improve cooperation between countries and people around the world. I'm inspiring to other people because I was the first African-American president. This inspires other people to work toward their dreams and hopes. I have confidence in myself because I try to make endings new beginnings for our lives. I'm caring for other people because I made a team called Obamacare, who strives to improve access to health insurance for US citizens. Here's some fun facts about me. My first name, Barack, comes from the Soweele word "Braak," and the definition means blessing. My middle name, which I bet you don't know, is Kuzine. Barack Kuzine Obama. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Hey, from our 44th president to our first.
There were many people that helped America become a free country, and I, George Washington, was one of them. I was born on February 22, 1732, in Virginia on a farm. I spent a lot of time with my brother. At age 20, I stopped going to school because my dad died. I taught myself. I got a job measuring land. At age 20, I became a soldier, and my brother died. When my brother died, I lived at Mount Vernon, Virginia. I got married when I was 26 years old. I married Martha. I had two... Martha had two children from her first husband, so I adopted Martha's children. Martha and I had four grandchildren. When I was 22 years old, I led an army of farmers and merchants against the world's most powerful army in the world, and we won! In 1783, the war ended, and I became the first President of the United States of America. I served as President for eight years. When I was 67 years old, I died from a throat infection. Washington DC, Washington State, Washington DC and Washington State are named after me. I am on the quarter. I am 6'3". My shoe size is 13. I had 30 fox hounds. I had no middle name. I had fake teeth. I was born on February 22. They always celebrate my birthday on President.
Okay. And last but not least, we welcome Walt Disney.
Who would you say made the world's happiest place on Earth? Me, Walter Elias Disney. I was born on December 5, 1901, in Chicago. My parents were Elias and Florida Disney. I had three brothers, one sister, and a dog. We lived together on a farm in Missouri. I really liked living on the farm. Can you believe I didn't start school until I was almost seven? I had to wait till my five-year-old sister Ruth was ready to go to school. How embarrassing. I wasn't the best student around. I preferred to entertain people, make them have a good time, you know, to be the class crown. One time, I put a leash on a mouse and walked it around the room. My teacher did not appreciate it. I was more into performing in plays and drawing cartoons. I was told I was pretty good at it. Animals were my favorite thing to draw. I was so good at drawing, I got three haircuts by sharing my drawings with the barber. When I was in high school, I still didn't learn to be a great student. I only enjoyed drawing cartoons for the school newspaper. After a year, I left high school and took art classes at night. I wasn't sure what I wanted to be when I did it. After spending some time during World War I driving an ambulance in France, I returned home to try to find work as an artist. I made a new business called Laffogram Cartoon. A few other young men joined my company. Although we tried hard, my company was not successful. I knew if I wanted to make it big, I had to move to Hollywood. We hired some people to help us get the job done. During this time, we came up with the character Mickey Mouse. At first, he was not popular, but I never gave up because I knew Mickey could be great one day. I made the first cartoon movies with sound starring Mickey called Steamboat Willie. It was a big hit. I continued to make movies with new characters and had lots of ups and downs. I even created a theme park where lots of my characters came from. I called it Disneyland. People from all over the world came to be entertained. Since Disneyland was so successful in California, I bought land in Florida for a new theme park called Epcot. On a trip with my family, I got very sick. I got lung cancer from smoking too much. I passed away before Disney World was built. My brother carried out my dream for Disney. Even though I am gone, the world of Disney continues to entertain families all over the world today.
About one more round of applause for our... Thank you for having us.
Wow, that was just amazing. Like, all the enthusiasm and energy, that was just great. And it's hard to present in front of adults, and you guys were not nervous at all. That was, like, really amazing. But thank you so much. Other board members, comments?
Well, this is third grade at Lower Gwinnett. You have a special place in my heart. I know how hard you worked on these, and your bottle buddies and your props. So really good job. I loved it. Very good.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have to say that I've been talking to every one of you.
So that was a great job. Oh, I'm not on. Okay, if no one else has comments, we always like to get a picture at the end. So, Dan, since you have children. And Rosetta, you've not been in the picture yet. So why don't you come on up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, guys. And so you're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. It will not be that, like, that much energy or that much excitement until we get to the Policy Committee report. That's always very exciting. So you're free to stick around, or if you'd like, you can also, you know, go at this point and take some snacks on your way out. Good night, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good job, kids.
All right, so we will continue on. Okay, guys, I'm sorry, but now we're sticking High School Monthly Highlights. I'm sorry, that's really hard to follow. Hopefully you have that same energy level, though, in your report.
My name is Sachi. I was born September 2nd, 2005. Yeah. Okay, sorry. So to start, for the month of February, it was Women's History Month. So the library has been celebrating by displaying women authors and notable women in history. And then additionally, in ninth grade science classes, there was a project to highlight women and minorities in science. And then one of the clubs at the high school Quiz Bowl got the championship title for the second year in a row, and they're going to go to states at the end of April. So good luck to them. And then the high school also had their musical. This year, it was Guys and Dolls. I'm not sure if you guys already heard about that, but it had a great turnout, and everyone did amazing. And planning for Minithon has started, and they're gonna... It's on April 14th, and they're donating to Four Diamonds for Childhood Cancer. And we have a lot of teacher participation this year, so that's when teachers have, like, a challenge to do if they raise X amount of money. So I think Mr. Kelly, one of our administrators at the high school, and Mr. Cairns, I don't know what their goal is, but once they reach the goal, they're gonna do hot wings or eating hot sauce until they're gonna cry. So they're stocking up on milk now. So I think they're gonna livestream in everything, so look out for that. And then last Friday, Whistaken's Indian Cultural Association had a holy event for middle and high schoolers, and it was a great way to celebrate the holiday with all my friends. And then it was a really good turnout, and everyone had a really great time spreading colors.
So in addition to what Sachi said, also, we had the robotics team compete at Hapor Horsum recently, and they actually placed fourth out of 34 teams. And this actually earned them a spot in April. When is it? May or something? April, at the Worlds for robotics competition, which is amazing. Yeah, crazy. And so congratulations to them. They also won the Industrial Design Award for the robot, as many of you may know, called Miss Daisy. So it's been the name for a while. And so they won that amazing award also at the high school. We have spring sports have started, which includes lacrosse, tennis, baseball, and actually, boys volleyball has started up. So that's awesome for them, yep. We also have junior prom coming up in April 21st, so excited for that. Juniors are very excited for that. And then finally, we have Whistaken Ultimate Frisbee. They won their Ula tournament, which qualified them for the national tournament in Salt Lake City. So again, congratulations to them, which is awesome. Thank you.
Wow, thank you. And there was a lot of energy in that report. I appreciate that. Wow, so many awesome things happening at our high school. Thank you so much for that report. Any comments or questions?
I'm sorry, that was very fun. I appreciate... It was very, very fun. Thank you for volunteering that. That was awesome. I had a lot of...
Yeah, Blake, can you tell us a little bit more about that? It was a financial reality fair? Was that what it was?
Yeah, it was called, like, a financial literacy fair. So thank you for reminding me of that. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for missing out. I apologize. I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But yeah, so it's basically juniors got the experience to, like, basically, they walked into the circle gym into the high school, and they were assigned a job and a salary that went with that. And so they got a monthly balance. Like, I was a dentist. I made $83,000, and then I was bringing home, like, $5,000 a month. And then you would subtract taxes. You would go through all the stations, and you would get, like, where you would live, what type of transportation you would have, what type of food you, like, had, entertainment, all these types of things. And it was really eye-opening to see, like, actually how to budget stuff. And I was in debt. I needed a side hustle, so I had to be a part-time server at a restaurant because I was heavily in debt. So with student loans and all that. So it was really fun. It was really eye-opening. So that was awesome.
I must say, a lot of...
A lot of the students who came by me, because I was housing, they're like, "Oh, I'm living at home." I can't afford all these things. So... Or they would come around, and they're like, "I can't afford to live in my own apartment. I have to go back to mom and dad." So it was quite the experience. It's a lot of fun for me, too.
That sounds really fun. We're gonna do that every year? That could be an amazing, awesome. Okay, great. Other questions or comments? All right, well, thank you again for that report.
Great work.
All right, Blue Bell Elementary Construction Project, question?
Thank you. While they're getting set up, I'll just do a quick background as to where we are. The goals of the project were to add capacity, and that was two sides. One was classrooms, and then also the core facilities, which would be the same type of room that we had at Stony Creek, which is the gymnasium, cafeteria, kitchen, and auditorium at night. And that is one of the goals. One of the other goals was to separate the buses and the cars, and that has been done by having the buses come off of school lane, whereas the rest of the traffic is going to continue on Symphony. And the other goal on the cars was dual-fold. Because there's so many cars, we wanted to queue up two lines of that as well. So I think the last time that we all talked about Blue Bell, it has been a little while, was the I-34 hearing that was, I think, in December. And the design that... And the design that Mike, this is Mike Bell from Breslin, and he's one of the partners of the firm. He's going to be updating you on. The design itself has pretty much stayed the exact same. So the design has held up over the time period, and he's going to walk you through with some neat. Emphasis on certain spaces and. Also, along with them doing all the design work in the background, we've also been going through all the various approvals. So. That's been occurring as well, and I'll update you on that. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike to hopefully show you some really interesting and fun things.
Thank you very much. It's exciting to be here this evening. It has been a little while since I've been before all of you. You put me after a tough act, though. But I'll do my best. Those kids, children were great. So tonight, we really want to talk on four, four topics as part of the project update. So I want to talk about the schedule, which Wade alluded to. We have a virtual fly through animation of the project to share with you. I want to talk about the alternate bids that are included in the project and also provide a budget update as well. So from a schedule standpoint, you know, we've been through the design and documentation phases of the project. So about. A year ago, we were working on the study for the district. In June, the district had made the decision to move forward with the project. So. Since June of last year, we've worked through schematic design, design development. We've held the Act Thirty Four hearing. And just as of last week, we've completed the construction documents and specifications for the project. So we are, you know, we are through the design phase. And it has gone. You know, the teams worked very hard. All the consultants have really collaborated well, and we're, we feel we're in a very good spot with the project.
On the, on the schedule, I'm just going to walk through. This was the original schedule, and then on the left hand side, you have the various items that. Our time elapsed and then the original schedule is there and then the proposed. The thing I just want to accent is. We had, the design team has done a tremendous job. We had. With pain township through all the reviews, they were fantastic. They were helpful. And making sure that we stayed on task. They also came up with some really, really great suggestions. So we went through all of those various approvals at the whip pain level. Another approval that we have to do sort of in the background is through the conservation district. That has always been a very, very difficult approval to get, and we are having trouble getting. So it's not that anybody's doing anything wrong. The conservation district has always sort of been. Sort of on that. Long lead line item. And we have not obtained the conservation districts obtain approval yet. So therefore, we are going to be pushing back the. Advertisement and then the receipt of the bids from May through July. We had a very, very aggressive timeframe. Truthfully, we hit all of them other than the conservation district. So that's where we are. The timeframe from there would be originally, we had thought we would be able to call a special meeting in May. We're now going to look for sometime in August to award the contracts. Instruction will begin in the fall as opposed to the summer. And then there's various other things. The actual completion of the building will go from. The new addition going from August to December, and then the completion of all the other spaces would be instead of December, it would be June. So again, not a huge difference, but. Truthfully, the team hit their timeframes and we just can't get the conservation district through all the approval. And that's where we are.
Just to, to highlight. So the summary of the project, this is the site plan for the project in Peach. We, and dark gray is the new addition along the rear of the school. In the light gray is the existing school and what you see in orange are the areas of the existing building that are to be renovated. The rear of the building, we're provided dedicated bus loop for bus traffic. In the front of the building, there will be a dedicated loop for vehicular traffic. The existing playground space will be available for overflow parking for events. And then up at the top there, you see the bus garage. And the existing bus lot. So right now, the parking behind the addition. So this parking lot here right now is actually part of the existing bus lot. So part of the project is to expand the bus lot over here to compensate for the loss of this parking here. So that's one of the initial phases of the project is getting that bus, expanded bus lot constructed so we can get the buses over there and. Create a staging area to start construction on a new addition. Floor plan of the project, this has not changed from what you had seen previously. Again, the peach and the dark gray is the new addition. You have the entrance here from the bus loop. Right inside the doors to the left is the multi purpose room, stage, kitchen and serving area. Coming down the hall, we have flexible large group instruction space. And then continuing further down, we have the two classrooms that have folding partitions to allow them to be used as small group rooms, dedicated music classroom, and six general education classrooms. And this addition connects to all four wings of the existing building, just to improve the flow of students within the facility. For the renovated areas. In the front here. We have the existing cafeteria kitchen area. That will be converted to a conference room, special education classroom, two emotional support classrooms with a shared sensory room. Faculty planning room. Across the hall, the existing gym is. Scheduled to remain, but with the addition of a folding partition to allow it to be divided into two spaces and the existing stage would be converted to a small group room. And then up here at the top right in the kindergarten wing. This room here, right now, this room takes up the full width of that wing. So we actually have to extend this corridor through here to connect to the new addition. So this rendering, I believe is the same rendering you had seen previously, showing the new entrance at the multi purpose room from the bus loop. With the stairs and the ramps taking them up to the entrance, the brick. We've worked very hard and looked at many, many samples, but we have very good matches for the brick to the existing buildings. So again, we want this building to really complement the existing building, not look like something born that was added to it. So we've done that. We're confident with the brick selections that have been made and that that will complement the existing building. And then what we have here to share tonight that we haven't had before was a fly through or a walkthrough of the building. So just to sort of provide an introduction to this, this is just showing the path that we're going to be, I'll be taking once. We're going to start out here at the bus loop. Just do a little pan around the outside, looking at the entrance. We will then move and we'll come in the new entrance here at the bus loop and immediately turn and go into the multi purpose room. We'll take a spin through the multi purpose room, come back out into the corridor. And take a nice look at this flexible large group instruction space. And then we'll continue down through the new addition and take a look at the small group rooms, the typical classroom, the music classroom. We'll then move up front, we'll come in the main entrance, look at the expanded lobby and the conference space. And then we're going to jump over here and do a spin through the emotional support classrooms in the sensory room. In the foreground here is the bus loop. And the parking and the service area along the rear of the school. So this is coming in from the bus entrance. Lot of natural light in this corridor, looking out into the courtyards, turn here and come into the multi purpose room. Very similar to Stony Creek, a lot of natural light coming in from clear story windows. And the animation here, this. Area closest to us was set up for audience seating. This is the cafeteria seating in the other half. There'll be a defaulting partition that divides this into two spaces. Here we're coming out with the serving areas on the left, coming back out into the corridor. Again, lots of natural light looking into the courtyards at the existing school. And we come down the hallway here. Leave turning right here would take you into the green wing in the existing school. This is a look at that flexible, large group instruction space. That could be used for a number of things that can support events in the multi purpose room. It could be used for, you know, educational programming throughout the day. That I think is going to be a tremendous space for the building. This is coming down the hall, looking into the small group rooms on the right. I mean, pass the connection to the next wing into the existing school. And here we're going to go into one of the typical classrooms. These rooms are modeled after Stony Creek. Create that continuity. Lots of built in shelving. Teachers' desks, storage for students' belongings. There's a sink in each classroom. Now we're going to spin into the music classroom here. Music classroom, they wanted a carpeted floor, and so we were able to use the carpet to create a piano key pattern along the teaching mall there. The fun detail. Here we're out front, coming in the entrance. You can see the new windows to the right along the existing cafeteria. And then coming in the entrance here, we've been able to open up a little bit of a lobby space here that doesn't currently exist to the right. I think that's currently a copy area for faculty. And then now we're also. Been able to add this conference room, which is located where the current stage is off the cafeteria in Blue Bell. Now here, we're jumping over to the emotional support classrooms. And this is in the current cafeteria space at Blue Bell. We're passing through the shared sensory room. Those will have padded walls for student safety and storage to bring out now variety of equipment for to suit individualized student needs. And then this is the second emotional support classroom. We're ending here just with another view of the addition. So again, to Wade's point, the design really hasn't changed through this process, but as we've developed the model and everything through it, we've been ready to share this with you this evening. And. This is really exciting to be able to share with you. So the next time we want to talk about was alternate bids. So on every project, we work closely with the district. We work with Dewey Engineering. And coming up with a list of alternate bids, really the goal being to give the district, you know, flexibility on bid day to help control costs. And on this project, some of the, the two significant alternate bids are, one is to remove three classrooms from the addition. The second one is to not renovate the existing gym and stage. And then in addition to those two, I'd say larger alternates, we also have thirteen additional alternate bids as part of the project. For items such as floor finishes, roofing, building control systems, along with some other items. Again, just in an effort, in an effort to provide some flexibility to the district on bid day. So this plan is showing what. With these alternates, what the first alternate is for the deletion of the three classrooms. So this is showing what that plan would look like without the three classrooms. What we've been able to do is take an opportunity to, opportunity there with the space being created to create a little bit of an amphitheater next to the woods. So, you know, if the district decides not to do the three classrooms, take, take that as an opportunity to do something, you know, for some outdoor learning. And then here inside the building, you can see there in the center, this, this alternate would be just to leave the existing gym and stage as is for now. And so. One of the, with the adjustment in the schedule, the one item to point out is. We talked a lot early in the project about the Act Thirty Four limit and that Act Thirty Four limit, the way it's determined. As you take, you know, you have to come up with a capacity and you multiply that by a per pupil cost to give you the limit. And we were really challenged in this project to maximize both the capacity and then in turn the, the limit. One of the advantages are with the schedule change and opening bids after July first, the new per pupil cost limits for twenty twenty three take effect July first. So we will be able to use those new limits. On this project with the schedule and doing the Act Thirty Four calculation. So what that does is it allows, and we are hoping. Or from what we're hearing, we're expecting a significant increase in the per pupil cost. So what that means is we can, you know, hopefully have a lower capacity, we should be able to have a lower capacity. With the higher per pupil cost to achieve the same Act Thirty Four limit that the board approved back in November. And that's going to significantly increase your, I think, opportunity to be able to look at these alternates and consider taking them. Not being a situation where you feel like you have the necessities. To make, you know, the Act Thirty Four calculations work and really just hopefully be a situation with at least one of these alternates to be able to look at it and really just determine it based on its value. Do you see a value in including this in the project or not? Dewey Engineers, they've done their estimate, you know, they're, they're valuing the three classrooms at about a million dollars. You may look at three classrooms and say, for a million dollars, that's, there's a good value in that. I mean, just the cost to put in probably three modular classrooms would probably cost you in today's dollars, I would guess around four to five hundred thousand dollars. So for to have three classrooms that are brick and mortar, they'll be there for fifty years, that may be a good value for this. Conversely, you know, with the existing gym, to do the renovation work in there is a little surgical, taking the existing stage out, bringing that down floor level. Inserting steel and to support the folding partition. So they're estimating that at half a million dollars and. You know, the benefit there is you're gaining a small group room and a divider for the gym. But, you know, between those two, I think there's, there's a higher value in the class for the classroom. Did you click ahead? I'm sorry, click ahead. So should you decide to take the D-DOT alternate for the three classrooms, though, this is a rendering of what that could look like. So you have. Yeah, architecturally, you have great options either way, but have the classrooms or not. I think there's great opportunity here. I know, no matter which direction the district decides to go. So for the budget update. So the big, the big number here is the first one at top, just jump right to the bottom line is back at schematic design, design development, the project budget was twenty five million nine eighty three sixty. At the most recent budget completed by Dewey Engineers within the last month or so, that has jumped about six hundred and sixty five thousand dollars to twenty six million six hundred and forty six thousand sixty dollars. Within this, when you start to look at some of the breakdown, you'll see there's, there's a more significant jump in the construction cost. The construction cost has gone up well over one point four million dollars. That's largely due to, just as the projects got better defined, understanding the complexity of, say, like some foundations and footing work that needs to be done. All the utility work that will need to be done and tie-ins to the existing building, as well as just site, site improvements and approvals that are required. Along with just the ongoing inflation. But so even though construction cost has gone up. By a larger amount than the project cost. As we've gone through design, we've eliminated the design contingency. We're through the design process. I think it's important to note, the budget is still carrying a two million dollar project contingency for construction. That has not been reduced. And that's, that provides definitely some, some buffer. And then here at the bottom with these alternates again. Dewey Engineers estimated these as a million dollars for classrooms and about half a million for the stage, gym and stage area. So there hopefully would be an ability here with, taking advantage of the Mac Thirty Four numbers to hopefully, you know, give the district the, an option to select those options to keep the costs down.
So at that point, I think we'd like some questions, if anybody has any, and if not, I'll just accent a couple of things. So any questions for Mike or Brian or myself?
So mine is maybe question comment together. So touring Blue Bell, I can't see us getting away about those extra three classrooms. Like there is serious construct, like issues there with the capacity. So I personally do not even see it being an option after being over there, but when will we make that decision?
We would make the decision when we get the bids. The various contractors will bid the project with them, and then they would give us an alternate without them. And that's when Mike was referring to that million dollars. Say the bids come in absolutely great, and we're really thrilled with them. We say, well, let's keep all the classrooms and we go from there. Say they don't come in great, you're, you know, the board or the public or somebody is worried about the number, and we still meet the PDE constraints, that would be something we could look at at that point in time. The other alternative, which is the conversion of the gymnasium, I think administratively, our preference is to not do that, so that it would be another large space for people to run around and blow off some steam. And truthfully, we'd probably leave that for the future. If some capacity was needed in the future, that could be converted at that point in time. But again, if 500,000 plus or minus administratively, we don't probably see a lot of value in that. One of the reasons that we looked at that originally was, as Mike mentioned, PDE gives you capacity and capacity equals dollars to them. So we were converting that to give us two more educational spaces, which would allow us to quote-unquote sort of meet their criteria better. But I think all in all, if we get positive bids, that probably would not be something that we would recommend converting.
Okay, that's what I was confused about. That's different than what we're changing for the emotional support classrooms.
Correct, that's the cafeteria.
Oh, okay, got it. So I agree with Amy, like with the enrollment increase we've seen, I think the number I heard was 26% in elementary over the last five years here in West Hicken. I just can't see cutting those three classrooms at the, you know, with those numbers.
Yep, I thank you very much for those comments. And again, that'll be a decision that the board will, at bid day, you know, say we have great bids and we'll have various options and we'll, the design team along with Dr. Chris Field will make a recommendation and say, this is what we're thinking, and then we'll have discussion about it.
Two questions. One, in terms of the construction budget and the alternate option, alternate plans potentially. Given the increased cost of construction for materials, labor today versus a year ago versus the last several years, is there any benefit for us to wait another year to see if things come into better alignment in terms of construction cost? Was that considered and is there a recommendation on that?
Do you want one at a time?
Yeah, well, yes.
Sure, so the answer is, I think we absolutely could consider that. I think that educationally, we know that the building has modulators and our hope is to construct and get out of modulators as quickly as possible. I think also if we had a crystal ball and we knew the things were going to go down, then it probably becomes more viable. But if we just sort of hope that they go down, I don't know that that would be enough to make a decision on. Again, if the majority of the board really had a feeling for the delay and that being an advantage, we could do that, but that's the pro and the con. Mike, anything beyond that?
There's not, again, need the crystal ball to answer that one. I think we're continuing to see, I think we're seeing things, it seems like things are starting to stabilize a little bit. We are seeing, I think one of the best things we can see or see and hope for is good competition. We want as many bidders as possible to bid on this project. And that's probably one of the best cost controls you can have is good competition. And with that, we are seeing, you know, prices are continuing to escalate on materials, not as quickly as they were. We are seeing more competition among contractors, which is helping with things currently. To project what's going to happen next year, I really don't know. If the, I think the only time I can say in my career where I saw prices actually drop was in the recession of like '08, '09. There we actually did see a little bit of, and even at that, it was a minor actually decrease in cost, but generally costs go up with time. And it's just a matter of how fast they're going.
One other thought on the delay versus not is that in addition to the capacity concern that we see, I think it's important to remember that that building is operating with a core facility for its existing population that's very much undersized. And so in addition to the classroom piece, I mean, that, those, we're definitely getting some more classrooms, whether it's plus three or not, depends. But what we are also getting is that really awesome multipurpose room, which then allows us to create the really awesome emotional support space. And those two things happen now, but they're in compromised spaces that aren't ideal. They're older and they're smaller than they should be.
I think finally, if the bids come in radically over what we're estimating, then I do think to a certain extent, we come back to the board and we have even, you know, harder discussions about that. If the bids come in great, then I think, you know, the educational side is going to, at least administratively, lean us to make a recommendation to the board to go forward.
Great, thank you. The second question was regarding the Conservation District. I know they can be challenging to work with at times, just like historical commissions, et cetera. How far apart are we with getting an approval from them? Are there a number of issues that are still outstanding or close?
So they actually met today, the Conservation District agreed to meet with us to review, I guess, sort of the end of our completeness review and sort of at least talk about the technical review for Blue Bell. That's where we are as to how far we are. It really just depends on how many times they review the plans and send some, send them back to us to make revision. That seems to take about a month at least every single time. So we absolutely know that that is what we need to have happen quickly. So that's where all the attention is. And, you know, Amy and Jim have offered to help, you know, make phone calls or do whatever to make sure that the Conservation District knows how important it is to us. I've made phone calls as well, and I think we just have to get through the process. So I can't really say we're close or far yet, because we need to get to technical review to find out, you know, it could go through perfectly. Unlikely, but it could go through very, very quickly, or it could go more through a standard review and it would take a while. I will update the board as we go through.
Great, thank you, Wade.
Anything else from the board?
If we could just go back to the timeline changes?
Yep. Thank you, go ahead.
So, excuse me, so the new addition was going to originally be completed in time for the start of the 2024 year?
Yes, yep.
Okay, you go back.
He'll get there. And now it'll be about December of that same year. So it goes from August to December.
We'll still be using the modulators then?
Yes.
That fall?
Yes, yep.
And do we have a particular time limit on those or do we do it annually?
I'm positive that we can continue to use them. Clearly, our advantage would be getting rid of them during the summer, but at Stony Creek, we had the same issue where we got rid of the modulators mid-year.
Okay. And so the particular space then, the classrooms, the music is in one of the modulators, what is in the other modular? I forgot.
I think it's another encore type activity.
Okay, so those two would move into those new classrooms come the beginning of the year? But now what about, so we have a space issue there. Are we going to have classes that are overcrowded then that year until we can use the space the following year?
Right, so I think we are going to have to keep an eye on that. And obviously, as we do kindergarten registration, we're going to have to see. I truthfully do think that there's a possibility that our sections at Blue Bell are going to remain the same for the next couple of years. We had one section this year that was right on the cusp of potentially even moving down a section as opposed to increasing. So I think, I think we have a fair chance of being okay.
You don't think we'll need like another modular then?
I suspect we will not.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just to clarify and to add to Amy's question, would we be at jeopardy of being an occupational kind of limit? Like having too many students enrolled for what that building can hold?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, again, they're very good questions. It is crowded at Blue Bell right now. But, you know, to really be above the limit, we'd have to have difficulty, say, scheduling kids to eat. And I don't think that would happen. I think we have the ability to figure out how to do those types of things. In the actual classrooms, the question, are we going to run out of classrooms? And I think the answer is no. Hallways are going to be crowded and, you know, those types of things. But I think functionally we'll be okay.
Wade, and I have a question that's not really related to this part of the project, but as far as like their current facilities.
Yep.
Like I know I brought up to you the restrooms at Blue Bell that we need some updating. Have we looked into that as a separate project?
Yeah, so Brian actually has looked at that. We don't have anything to bring forward as a project at this point in time. You know, I don't remember the actual year of construction for Blue Bell. I think it was 1960 or 55 or something like that. It is a very, very old building. Amy brought forward questions in one of her tours about the, I believe it was the classroom bathrooms. Is that where you were?
Both the classroom as well as the bathrooms, just out in the hallways.
Right.
Were really old.
Right, and, and we will certainly come up with projects in order to do better. There's a couple of different options. Some are gut and some are sort of, Brian had brought to me, an option for sort of re-coding. So again, we are not going to be able to take 1965 building and make it as nice as the new classrooms at Stony. Can we do better? Yes, we can. No magic wand.
All right, thank you again, Wade. Any other questions that come in? All right, well then, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you for your patience. And again, as Paul was asking the questions about timeline and Conservation District bathrooms, I will send answers out to the board. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we'll move on to our first public comment period. I'll remind everyone that you have a max, we allow maximum five speakers per hear on the same topic. We asked that you limit your comments to three minutes. It's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. And when appropriate, we will follow up with responses on the district's website. I don't have anyone registered in person. Is there anyone online?
There's no one on Zoom.
All right, then we will move forward to the Board President Report. First is our new committee list, 61A. I really like the new format. It's really nice. So you can see all of our committees and who's on those committees. Does anyone have any comments or questions about this? Find your name on a committee you weren't aware you were on?
I wasn't aware I was chair of one of them, but it's okay. I'm very excited for the health of wellness and safety.
Same here. All right, no other questions? All right, so we'll have that for approval next week. And now we want to discuss the annual board retreat options. I know we, some of us have talked about this, everybody would like to go on a trip somewhere. That's, I don't think feasible, right?
To find feasible.
Well, they were talking about going to Antiqua.
That one might be semi feasible.
It's just a joke. But actually, it's actually just date, figuring out what dates we want to have it. So a lot less of a fun conversation. It'll probably be here in this boardroom. So we were looking at which dates, Jim, again.
It's typically a Monday in June where, and the concept is to review how we did on the district goals for the year that just ended. Start the conversation about goals for the coming year, don't finalize anything. And then have some sort of professional development opportunities, depending on the year. So the last day of school will be that week of June 12th. So that exists as a possibility, Monday, the 12th, although I'm sure people are going to be busy. The 19th and 26th are their two Mondays in June. I'm not sure how available people are for those. But it's pretty wide open. I mean, as of now, it's unscheduled in the, it's been unpublished in the date and the paper, so we can do whatever we'd like.
And what about the first Monday? Do we have a meeting that Monday?
We do.
Okay, and we couldn't do it like the same evening, like piggyback then, like how one and then?
Probably a little too much for one evening. And we certainly can try to, if we'd like, on June 5th. Right.
Yeah, the 12th, I mean, we're still in school anyway, so I don't think people would really be traveling. And then the next Monday is actually Juneteenth, which I think is a district holiday. Is that right or no?
It's handled the same way as other holidays, that in that building's not closed, but people are welcome to.
Okay, so maybe not having a meeting that day.
That's okay.
I think the 12th would be a good day, because, yeah, we're still in session, we should still be in the area, all of us. Yeah, I think that would be a good day. Is everybody for the 12th?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, June 12th, does that work? Okay, so let's do June 12th. I mean, mostly head nods from everyone, so I think June 12th.
That's good.
Good, okay. All right, great, all right. Those are my only two informational items, and I have no action items this evening. So we'll move on next to our superintendent report, Jim.
Thank you. My one item is a discussion about this year's school calendar. And I suppose it's a good problem to have, depending on whose perspective you have, students' perspective, older students, younger students. But we do have, at the moment, two snow days, weather days built into the calendar that are not, that have not been used. So we, presuming for the moment, we have very little snow in the next few weeks, then we'll have to do something with those two days. And it gets very, very tricky as the end of the year approaches to find days that are good to take off the calendar, because so many things are on there. In last year, as you recall, we took the one remaining day we had left off of the end of the year, June, which makes sense. This year, again, our, again, as compared to last year, our last day of school is on a Wednesday, the 14th. So I know the juniors don't have that, it seems like. But in any event, you don't want to take both days off in June, because then the last day of school will be a Monday. That's just not practical.
Why?
Yeah, we need that to be a viable day when people can come to school.
So just from the viewpoint, though, of an elementary parent, like on those three days, I'm already planning that my kid's only in school for a couple of days anyway. So finding childcare for the, just like a couple of hours doesn't seem as big of a deal as trying to find a whole other day to have off. I mean.
And with the half day anyway.
It's, right, as I'm saying, oh, that we would replace it with another half day, you're saying?
Well, let me clarify this. So the two days built in are full days. And the last three days of school, no matter what days they are, are always early dismissal days. So there's always going to be three early dismissal days, no matter what. They count, it's just that they're built into our negotiated agreement with the union and our approved calendar as early dismissal days for a variety of reasons, the end of year reasons.
So my preference would be, even though we would end the half day on Monday, would still be to take it off the end of the year. I agree with you, Anne, like I'm going to already have childcare lined up that week anyway, because it's half days. And the alternative, the other day we were looking at, is taking a day that was, an activity was originally scheduled for one of our schools. And even though there's a rain date built in, let's say the rain back day.
There are other complications with this, is that our high school graduation is Thursday, June 8th. So if we put now, I'm guessing it's, now, so if we put, go backwards two days, that will mean that day is an early dismissal day. That gets extremely messy for graduation practices, graduation planning at the high school level. Really not ideal.
For the students or the teachers, like this, if you're saying you need them there a full day to practice?
There's a lot that happens on, on the Thursday of graduation for both students and staff.
Could they push it that a day earlier to practice? Could could they push it that a day earlier to practice?
Well, then, well, the answer is possibly. Um, however, there's things scheduled that day also. Like that's what I'm getting at. Like at the end of the year, every day has things.
Right, so what day are you proposing we cut instead? How about that?
If we need two days, um, I the suggestion would be one of the days in June and the Friday before Memorial.
And the Friday before Memorial Day is when Stony Creek has their field day planned.
It's um the tricky part is, wow, students are like, yeah, hey, four day weekend. Um, so the problem with any day prior to that is A, of course, might have a little bit of snow, though it's doubtful, but B, um, before final exams and especially AP exams kick in, every single minute of instruction is very, very valuable at high school level, starting right about now, really. So it the one thought pre my my uh I had thought like, hey, well, how about the Monday after recess? And it was brought to my attention that that's right in that sweet spot of lots of instruction going on for pending AP exam, which were not too too long after that. That would be a a big blow to the high school.
Must the half days that are built into the contract be the exact the exact three last days? It can't be like the Wednesday, Friday and Monday?
Correct, they're hardwired the last three days of school. They're correct. They're it's hardwired in the last three days of school, so we have to.
Then I would check as Dan said, to see if we could do the Wednesday practice for graduation.
Well, we could. I mean, we could. We could try to push things around at the high school, but that time of year is crazy at the high school. It's they they there's their choreography of events is is very, very tight. It's been been planned out, thought out. And and adjusting anything, the Friday, the ninth is okay for a half uh early dismissal. Going into graduation day or before is messing with a finely finely tuned machine.
Since I actually have kids in high school and had a daughter who recently graduated from high school, I can attest to Jim Jim's comments that um the days leading up until graduation, it's like packed with just, I mean, Sachi probably and she has some advanced uh view into that, probably see in our schedule as well.
Yeah, I know that a lot of teachers have literally planned every single class, like the hour, if it's a block day, eighty minutes, literally every single thing they're going to do up until if it's like an AP class, AP exam. So that's like till mid-May, so that would be the issue with.
So we kind of put ourselves into like a I don't know, a pickle here. And I might suggest in the future, maybe not building into snow days because you know what? The South is coming to us and we're not going there. And you know, I don't know if this is if we need two snow days anymore. Uh, maybe we need to look at that more closely in the future.
Certainly can. I I re- I recall the concern that we would would um use instead virtual days for, you know, if let's say we have three weather days and we we can't get to school. Um, there was a thought that, oh, well, the district is never going to have an old fashioned snow day again. And the answer is no, 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 we are. We're gonna have one or two. It's it is, you're right, we don't have to build them in, but if you don't build them in, you need them. You have the same bind anyway, like this, it just comes one form or another. In a perfect world, we would have used two snow days and all these days fall the way they are in this piece of paper. And then all the planning would would be carried on as it was. But we've been going to school without any snow.
Do we have two days or three days we built in? So we took that day off after the Eagles game, right?
That was a delayed.
A delayed opening. That's right. That's right. Okay.
Give me any more trouble than I already am with my colleagues.
All right, well, are there any other comments or questions on this topic? Jeff?
Um, so Jim, I mean, I I presume we're supposed to, we're gonna vote or consider a vote on um a change to the school calendar. Is that what you're talking about?
Um, what my my thought was, we we just discussed it tonight. It's still March, so this problem actually might take care of itself, but doubtful. No, no, but I don't think there's a lot of things that are surprising me of late uh on a number of fronts, one of which could be weather. So um, my thought would be, I would give a heads up to people uh this week that this is what the what we're considering. And then when we get back in April, the board would review it in a work session and approve it at a board meeting. So that's the answer to your question.
We're considering the Friday before Memorial Day because you're saying any other solution really isn't viable.
Right, if we need two, it would be that one. If we only need one, it would so in in other words, if we if we need one only, then that Wednesday of June.
The last day.
Right.
Uh, becomes Tuesday instead of.
Right, right. If we need, if we have two to get back, then the second one would be that squirrely um Friday before Memorial Day.
So this really is really not a board decision. It's this is what it is. This is our option.
Well, well, you we could force it on the high school to have a a compare or do something different.
You're telling us that's a really bad idea.
I wouldn't recommend it, but you.
And I'm sorry, the Tuesday after Memorial Day, what was on that day?
Uh, that's just that's starting that period of many, many events scheduled both day and night.
Amy, I have a quick question. Must it be snow?
What about a lot of rain?
Right, right. Well, now, see, we we did that, like maybe this. Uh, well, so the answer is no. It could be a weather emergency. But then eight, I remember eight time before AP exams take you away from some very, very critical construction time.
Well, all I'm asking is if if snow isn't in the forecast, but who knows what may it occur in the next month?
Yep.
There could be horrible storms. You have the ability to make the call because I don't think it's a minimum precipitation event.
Yes, if we need to close or some, it's it's actually not a snow day. It's technically emergency day. So yes, it's a it's emergency day and it could be any kind of weather, not just.
So can't we just leave it to chance and decide?
Yes, but then then people are gonna need to plan, but we 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 can definitely leave it chance for a few weeks and and maybe it'll fix itself.
It's too hot. And muggy.
I like where you're going, but elementary school parents need time to plan.
I hear what you're saying, but you the these are these are inclement weather days that we can't find a day to take. And so I'm just offering, if it doesn't have to be one certain type of precip, let's be creative on the precip.
But we will.
Or event.
We will be creative.
All right, thank you so much. And no other comments or questions? All right, I see you have no action items yet. Okay, so we'll move on to the assistant superintendent report. Janeway?
Hi, good evening. Um, I have no informational items and no action items this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on now to our board solicitor report, Jeff.
I have no informational items, but I have two action items that are listed. Uh, first, an approval of a settlement agreement between family F, student number F twenty-three and the district uh as presented uh at a cost not to exceed eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars. Uh, and secondly, the settlement agreement between family G, student number G twenty-three as presented uh and is some not to exceed as stated in document nine two.
Thank you, Jeff. And just with regard to the V two, um, because that is a hefty number. That's over a course of a few years of instruction, correct? That's not one year.
That is correct. That 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 is correct. That settlement amount is um it covers the twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four school years.
Okay, and I know you I realized we can't go into specifics, but can you share a little bit about the type of instruction that's offered at this institution that it it this costly?
I'm actually not sure if I can share that information. I would defer to Jeff, but um but I.
You can share that in executive session, but not in open session.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, any other questions or comments?
I'd be happy to follow up with a memo to the board. Um, I did send a memo to the board about these two cases. I could certainly send a an additional confidential memo to the board if that would be helpful.
Thank you. All right, anything further? That's it?
That concludes my report.
Okay, then we'll move on to our board. Oh, there's no other questions or comments? I've seen none. We'll move on to our board secretary report, Wade.
Thank you. Uh, there's no informational items, and at the next meeting, we'll be requesting approval of uh eight action items. Uh, the finance committee, the work session, the communication, look, they're they're almost all the things that Amy mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Um, the communications committee, the regular public board meeting uh on March sixth, the reg uh policy committee meeting on March thirteenth, the March fourteenth board curriculum technology meeting, the March twentieth board racial uh equity oversight committee and the March twenty-first communications committee meeting. So they'll be all presented at the next meeting for.
Great, thanks Wade. Any comments or questions? All right, we'll move on to the board treasurer report.
Thank you. Um, at the next meeting, there's no informational item, and the next meeting will be requesting approval and acceptance of minoting of the treasurer's report for February. Thank you.
Thanks, Wade. Again, any questions or comments? Stephanie, go ahead.
Wade, can you please, wait, we're not up there. I wanna, sorry, it's not you. My bad.
Okay, thank you.
There any other comments or questions? All right, thank you again, Wade. We'll move now on to our human resources report. Danielle?
Good evening. Tonight, there are no informational items. For your review, our four action items under twelve B of the human resources report. Um, the first three include resignations, appointments, a change of status, leaves of absence, extracurricular changes and volunteer and substitute additions. Action item four includes extracurricular job descriptions. Um, item five is a ratification of a conference request and item six is a ratification of the general healthcare resources agreement, adding a rate for behavioral consultants. And uh for your review are six, not four, action items tonight. So thank you for your consideration. Uh, this concludes my report.
Thanks, Danielle. Any comments or questions?
Yes, now I have questions. So I have two. So I was sad to see um that we have a resignation for a social worker. Is there plans to have that replaced and do we have like an effort underway? Like, isn't this one of the new efforts we're working on?
So. Yes, we were also see uh sad to see Janelle go. Um, and so that is a very recent um resignation. So we're still talking as a team as to, you know, where we're going next and how we're gonna replace those services, so.
Yeah, so sad to uh you definitely need that resource. And then just help me understand because I'm just not understanding um your twelve point six. What are we changing here? I I guess I'm not tracking to the original one.
No problem. So we outsource um some of our services to GHR, general healthcare services. So some of our subs come through through them um specifically. So classroom assistants mainly, um, sometimes uh some other services, but recently we needed um some support, um, a behavioral consultant. So it wasn't a rate that we currently had um in our contract. So this just amends our contract to add that rate. Um, and the rate was suggested by GHR to be competitive. Um, so we threw uh that that's in there now, so we can hire um a behavioral consultant um for some of our needs uh in our elementary school.
Yeah, so and maybe because uh this is like attached to probably a master service agreement, there's no way to identify who you're linking this back to, like to what title? So that's why it was super confusing because like reading this as uh like just as a standalone means nothing because it it's not attached to a title or who what type of position, so.
Yeah, this is B C, B B S C, so behavioral support consultant. So yeah, so that could be spelled out better.
Yeah, just in the future, it's just very like, what is this? Okay, thank you. That was it.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Dan?
What is unified sports? Is that different than some other track and field we currently have?
Yes, that's um some of our special education students um are able to participate in um in track.
Great. And then is the threads a sewing club? Because that would be amazing. Is that what that is?
Um. It's actually quite.
Yeah, it's it's a little bit more involved than that. Um, but they're promoting sustainability and provide accessible al- alternative to minimize textile waste within the Wasahagan community.
Oh, that's cool. All right, cool. It doesn't really cool.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing them, thank you so much for that report. We'll now move on to our communications committee report. Zepi?
Yeah, thanks. I just have a quick informational update. Uh, Wade did the hard work for me anyway on ten point eight that he summarizes what we talked about. Um, but uh we had a great meeting, great attendance by our board. Uh, we talked about possible scenarios of, you know, different start times, what that would do potentially, like it was all very kind of like high level right now, still looking through it. Um, what that would do to start and end times across the different schools. Um, there was some creative outside of the box thinking for how we can shave off some time by not sacrificing academic time, but maybe finding some other time in the high school to kind of shave off some time if we wanted to do that. And then uh Ms. Rollings and Sue, forget her last name, they they were thinking through a lot of of the things that we could do from kind of a communication perspective. Um, I think uh there's a lot of great ideas, still a lot to come, so we're very excited to kind of come back to that. Um, and one of the things we did talk about um was how this will kind of rope in or kind of be folded in with the health wellness uh committee, so that that's more to come there. And then we also talked about uh the other topic that's maybe not as exciting, but exciting because it's part of communications. We are in the final stages of our website red- redesigned, so uh the communications to committee is kind of doing through their final beta testing. And that is on schedule so that we can have this new design and this new communication platform moving forward for the next calendar year, but uh we will be kind of doing soft launches in the summer. That's the high level. Any questions? Any any anything I missed that that? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. All right, we'll move on next to our curriculum and technology committee report. Ronnie?
Dr. Guwan, are you gonna take the informational items?
I'm happy to do so. Thank you. Uh, yes, we have two brief informational items and one action item this evening. I'll start with those two informational items. Uh, first, on March fourteenth, we held a public board curriculum and technology committee meeting. We've reviewed the process. Our um elementary principals have been following to establish the revised elementary schedule. And um a final draft of that schedule is going to be shared at the April twenty-fourth public board workshop meeting. And the new schedule is intended to be implemented next school year, so the school year, uh twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Um, but as the principals have been working through the process, the new schedule has really been focusing on a couple of areas that are going to support some needs, one of which is an increased need for language arts time in grades K through three. Um, as well as an increased looking at increasing efficiencies to maximize instructional time across the school day. The new schedule is also going to provide um increased opportunities for student connection, socialization and movement, which includes additional recess time. The elementary principals uh will continue to gather input and feedback from school staff and families throughout the process. Other items on the agenda for the work curriculum and technology committee on March fourteenth included reviewing federal program grant expenditures, summer programs and the new curricula and program of studies. Which leads me into the second brief informational item, which is an announcement of the thirty day public review period for the revised planned courses and adoption of instructional resources. So document fourteen dash one A lists the planned courses of study, which includes the course revisions for English language arts for um social studies and world language, as well as a new freshman seminar course that was previously presented to the board at the December twenty-twenty-two board meeting. Um, but those curriculum documents are all available for these courses. They'll be available for public review for the thirty days in our office of teaching and learning. And also for public review of the instructional resources that are also listed in document fourteen dash one A, which were identified through the curriculum review process and those doc um those resources are intended to support the revised courses of study. Anyone who's interested in viewing the curriculum documents can call the office of teaching and learning to schedule an appointment at two one five six one nine eight thousand, extension fifteen ten. That's two one five six one nine eight thousand, uh, extension fifteen ten. Extension fifteen ten, starting tomorrow, March twenty eighth. They'll be available and we'll then be reviewing this item as an action item to seek board approval at the public board meeting on May first. Any questions at this time before we move into the action item?
I just have a comment. I just wanted to thank you and our principals for putting in the hard work to find ways to adjust our K through five schedule. You know, we're starting this Health and Wellness Committee and I personally think like it's really important to be moving, be active. And I think that will really help improve the health and wellness of our students. I really appreciate you finding a way to fit that into our schedules.
Thank you. The team has really worked creatively and diligently throughout this process and it it's been, it's been an ongoing process. So we appreciate the feedback from families and staff. And thank you for acknowledging that.
Any other questions or comments? I know, I don't know, Dr. George, can you see us?
Just to comment, I also appreciate the. Very diverse list of titles that are listed here. I don't know all of them, but the. The names of the titles and the names of the authors makes me smile. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for noticing. Thank you for that comment.
Thank you, Zepi. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you. Ronnie, Jim, what do you have to report? Yeah.
So our one action item that will be seeking ratification on April tenth. Is for the cost of outplay services for one student as outlined in Document fourteen dash one. And that concludes our report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments on that? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our Facilities and Transportation Committee Report, Jim.
Thank you. Uh, there are no informational items tonight and for next week's vote, we have. Uh, four action items to consider, fifteen B one through four. I'm gonna ask Wade to give us a more of a rundown of these four items, please.
Thank you. So number one supports the field and its construction. Testing and special inspection services that are needed. Um, for the turf project. Number two is. With the turf project as well. There are various escrows, fees and. Related items. The the largest being the million dollar fifty-two, which we would, just like we did with Stoney Creek, we would. Send that money to the township and then when it, the project is completed, that money comes back to us. Item three, as part of the consortium with MCIU, WGL. And the. Consultant will at some point in time be coming back and telling us to either lock in for a long period of time or a short period of time from the July. One through twenty-four month time later. And we're asking for approval to. Accept that recommendation at a not to exceed point oh five five, excuse me, point oh five three three. And the reason we're asking for sort of the preapproval on that with a not to exceed is because. When they go out to bidding, if they think that it is attractive pricing, they'll send a note to us and saying you need to lock in essentially now. And this will allow us to do so based on the recommendation from the MCIU consultant. Fourth item is in in support of the actions. To hopefully create safer walking area for the lower Gwenned folk. Um, on the night road area. It's a proposal to Higher Land Concepts Group. To support those actions for this, an estimate of not to exceed five thousand seven hundred and fifty and the proposal is included there. Behind and Lang Concepts Group is the big group that. Supported the creation of the Bootcroft and Nature Center and the walks through there. He's very, very. Aware and he's also just clever and smart. I think he'll be a good person to help us get through those conversations.
Thanks Wade. Questions?
So I guess I could be shooting myself in the foot here, but I don't agree with number four because I don't. And maybe he has more knowledge other than. Putting a fence on the woodlands along Night Road, but I don't think that's a problem. I don't think it's a solution to a problem. The things that parents have been complaining about for years have nothing to do with the wooded lot along Night Road. Um, they have everything to do with lack of crossing walks and crosswalks and lack of safe crossing points. Along Night Road as well as traffic that runs too fast. And that there's only one side of sidewalk where it's a pretty tight squeeze there, turning off a Houston. So for me, this is not the direction that I would want to go, particularly before we get public input. Particularly from the neighbors in the Marion Norma. Community where they often cross to come over to the woods there. And I think that that could be. Uh, you know, they wouldn't be able to use those woods as they currently are. It could also cause some issues with animal migration, could be an eyesore. There's a bunch of reasons that I just don't see this as a solution.
So, so. I understand your points. The proposal includes three meetings, which I'm planning. To invite him to the meetings which are going to be, I assume it won't be one. But the joint meetings with Ambler, Lower Gwenned officials in the district to try to come up with solutions. He's a smart person and I think his input would be helpful. In addition, frankly, if those solutions don't go forward. I do think that the fence is a viable option. And the board would ultimately have the ability to decide whether they want to do the fence or not do the fence, but. The the reason that I would think hiring him makes sense is because he's smart and if there's other solutions out there. He could be part of that team. Frankly, if there aren't other solutions, my opinion is that the board should strongly consider the fence because it potentially would be an increase in safety.
So is he like a traffic expert where he could come in and tell us like about. Biking routes or crosswalks placement and things like that?
Nope. If you wanted to hire a traffic consultant, we would hire McMahon. They're a traffic consultant, traffic engineer. We've hired them in support of developing. The the Blue Bell property renovation in addition, and then also the Stony Creek. I'm not recommending that at this time. Because the police will be part of the discussion. But but quite frankly, it is possible that we may decide to involve a traffic engineer. And we have very good relationships with them if needed.
Okay, I mean, I appreciate the thought. I just, I don't. Until we have a meeting to decide what direction we want to go in, I have a strong feeling that the neighbors are going to strongly oppose anything like this. And I know that because I walk to school every day with a lot of people that live in that neighborhood. So I'm well connected and asking them questions. And so. I just don't see spending this money until we have a better picture of what a plan might look like. That's my. I I could be wrong. I just don't, I don't, I don't see. I don't see the problem that the fence is fixing. It is what I'm saying.
Right, so so. My recommendation would be to hire him regardless if we end up doing a fence. But but again, as stated before. If no solutions come forward because we do not control some of the other solutions that are going to be mentioned. It is my belief that the fence should be considered. So hiring him would allow him to come to the meetings, provide input, hear from the neighbors, just like you're mentioning. Potentially come up with good solutions which aren't offense, but if the solutions are coming forward. He would be in a position to help with that.
Could we possibly revise this to just have him come in as a consultant and not have the fence as part of this proposal until those meetings are concluded?
Sure.
Because I think that's. What I think DM would probably feel more comfortable with.
Wade, I also want to ask, so previously we discussed having someone come in and look at the safety of our facilities. And I believe we did that previous, like last year, was it? Have a consultant come in to look at our facilities as far as safety?
Yes, so so, yes.
So does it, is there a company out there similar to that that will look at exterior of buildings and assess? I mean, it's a different type of safety, but looking at like our crosswalk area, like seeing if we have them at the proper places. Are there places they would recommend crossing guards?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not aware of anybody other than potentially a traffic engineer. We hired McMahon to come up with various solutions and provide options for. Increasing the safety. Geared towards the congestion with the middle school and the high school. That was geared towards cars and people pulling in and out of the high school and the middle school. I don't know that they would consider themselves to be expert in. How kids walk home. I could ask them and I'm not aware of any other expert who does that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Wait, based upon the the significant safety concern. Um, and coming up with the right idea. I know you mentioned the police coming by, but we're talking about public roads. Has there been any discussion about having a partnership or at least some sort of. Discussion with the neighboring townships who would ultimately make the call potentially. To to do either crosswalks, sidewalks, street issues, because they would, I think. Probably be in a better position than us to tell us what's feasible, what's allowable and what would. They may take up the cost of that because they're township issues.
Thanks, Marshall. We are having a meeting with, on April twenty-sixth at seven PM in this very room. It is not a board meeting, rather, I guess a public meeting I would call it. I have. RSVPs from important people, both police chiefs of Ambler and Lower Gwenned, Chief Kenny and Chief Brokowski. I have three Lower Gwenned Township supervisors confirmed. I have two, at least two Ambler Council women confirmed. And I'm going to, and I think I have Wade confirmed. Um, and then I'm going to also try to spread the word to some local neighbors that would have concerns that have had concerns over the years. So Marshall, I think that hope, I'm hoping, and that's my point here. I would like to get those people in a room first and say, what are, what can we do? Here are the pictures of our intersections that are very poorly marked. For crosswalks at all, but they're very trafficked. What can we do to make this safer? And I, what I kind of hear you saying Wade is like, we need to do something, but like, again, I don't. I personally don't see the woods as an issue. My something is, and if it falls on the townships, it does, but they have to do something. Thanks.
And I would say too, like this falls under the umbrella of safety. So I think like our new Health Wellness and Safety Committee would be the perfect committee to really look into this particular issue more.
Well, you're invited to the meeting.
Well, thank you.
You're invited to the meeting.
Didn't we send a note out about this or no? Yeah, okay, but we'll reset.
I didn't send to the entire board. I was waiting for confirmation from key players before I. Said anything, but that happened today. Chief Brokowski said he's coming.
Great, thank you for setting that all up, Dan. All right, um, that was our Facilities and Transportation Committee. Okay, that report is done. Right, no more questions, comments? All right, then we will move on to our Finance Committee Report. David.
Thank you, Anne. For informational items from the Finance Committee, we have a recap of the March fourteenth Finance Budget Workshop. We had a visit from the Anne Frank, the Director. Of the Wasikin Valley Public Library to present the budget. For that institution, which is somewhat controlled. By this board and they're asking for a three and a half percent. Increase to help them meet rising costs and ongoing improvements in the library and the programs that they're offering. Second, we touched on new programs and item requests that had been presented. Previously and at least tentatively narrowed down some of the. Request and expenses. For the time being, we heard from John McGowan, an extensive. Coverage of the technology budget, which is slated to increase about eight and a half percent. And that, at the moment. We covered the North Monaco Technical Career Center Budget. A group of functions known as other instruction programs. And finally, student activities. Our next meeting for the Finance Committee would be April eighteenth at six thirty in this room. And. If I need to say, you need to present any more on that, Wade? All right, we have. Four action items for next week to be considered. Number one is a routine approval of financial reports. Number two is approval to accept a donation from the Shady Grove Home and School Association. Of an outdoor pavilion project, which we learned about about a year ago. Is that right, when they presented here? What they wanted to do. Number three would be approval to waive the field usage fees. This summer for the Kiwanis Club Carnival and Fireworks. Display. And then number four, we're seeking approval of the list of payments for the month ending February twenty eighth. That's all unless Wade, you have more to say about?
In the April eighteenth Budget Workshop, that's going to be on Special Education, is that right? Or is there a different topic?
So it's Special Education, Regular Education. Normally, Dr. Chris Field, if we have enough information, does a review of sort of. This, the status of where we are for class sizes at the elementary and sections. Then we get into some of the two thousand sections, like twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, I believe. And that's it.
Okay, great, thank you. And then I just wanted to comment also, I saw the pavilion over Shady Grove. It looks beautiful. What a great space for the students. Uh, any other comments or questions? Nope, all right. Well, thank you again for that report, Dave. I will move on now to our Policy Committee Report, Marshall.
Thank you, Amy. We have two informational items this evening. One is a Policy Committee Meeting recap from March thirteenth. And the second one ties in with that. It is the Policy Committee Meeting Summary as attached in Document seventeen one A. Tonight is both exciting and bittersweet for the Policy Committee because as you all know. We have been reviewing the policies in this school district for the last three years, every section. And at our last meeting, which is the last meeting of the year, we began to look at the last two series in our policies, the eight hundred. Uh, and nine hundred series. Eight hundred has to do with operations and nine hundred has to do with community. We also looked at a couple of two hundred series policies that were up for revision per the PSBA. What I can tell you is that we have multiple revisions to the eight hundred series. As well as two hundred series and nine hundred series. They have to do with issues from copyright material to use of district information and technical resources. Conflict of interest, participation in public meetings, public complaints, school volunteers, parent and family engagement. Dissemination of literature, literature and materials, public behavior of school property. Again, parent and family engagement, enrollment in the district, enrollment of nonresidents and students dealing with. Issues of homelessness, foster care and educational instability. Those in addition to one district change regarding attendance are all policies that we reviewed. And are either up for revision or approval without any change, which there are just a couple. And then there are eleven policies that were up for deletion because they are already encompassed in. Either the revisions or changes that we had already discussed, and so there is no reason to keep them in the policy. So that's a recap of our meeting and next week, or their next meeting, we have twenty-three action items, seventeen B one through twenty-three. Uh, where I will be asking for approval of the first reading of twelve policies. Uh, as well as the deletion of eleven policies and two with no change. Uh, and with that, we have ended our three-year review of the policies. Then we'll be looking for a first and second reading. For approval and that will then lead us into. The excitement of next year, where we will simply be reviewing and commenting on any policies that need to be delved into any further, but this reviews. This encompasses the review of the policy. Thank you.
Congratulations, Marshall.
Please, please. There are so many people to thank.
Marshall, it reminds me of a story I heard about the. Reminds me I heard about the Brooklyn Bridge. They would start painting the Brooklyn Bridge at one end. It would take them, I don't know, a year, two years, maybe three years to get to the other end. And then they would, they would go back to the other end and start over again.
It's like pen dot.
I understand we mock what we don't understand, but let me tell you.
I understand we mock what we don't understand, but let me tell you folks how difficult a process this has been. From everybody involved, from our solicitor to Katie to Jim and Dr. Dewan and everybody who shows up. All the masses that show up to these meetings, week in and week out. It is an amazing conglomeration of participation, unity and togetherness. And it is simply a microcosm of what our district is. So with that in mind, I urge all of you to join the committee. And we look forward to seeing you next year.
Thank you for that report, Marshall. Are there any other comments or questions? All right, seen them. Thank you again. All right, we'll move on now to our racial equity oversight committee report, Paul.
Thank you, Amy. The committee met on March twentieth, twenty twenty-three. And at that meeting, we had an overview. Well, presentation actually from the district about special education identification. Dr. Dewan, do you want to share any highlights of the presentation?
Thank you. We, as, as Mr. Badger mentioned, the focus was on. Special education and specifically we were digging into looking at the data around disproportionality. Identifying areas where we see disparities, racial disparities in our special education. Population. And so Ms. Latour was there and she had shared a presentation that she worked on. With Dr. Heimel Kuski to review the data, to take a look at what we've done so far over the last couple of years. And, and prior to then, and then to also share out what upcoming action steps would be taken by the district. She also was a part of that presentation, shared relevant research around this topic. And then, of course, as with every racial equity oversight committee meeting. We wrap up the topic by opening the floor to a rich conversation with committee members. To provide their diverse perspectives as community members, as caregivers, as students, as staff in the district. And of course, as board members, to, to provide thoughtful questions for the district administration to consider. As well as suggestions and recommendations.
Thank you. The. Report was very well received. There was great conversation afterwards, a lot of good input. And it was encouraging to see what the district is doing on an ongoing basis to. Not only facilitate these programs, but also continuous improvement. Process to, to make sure that we're doing the best in practice to identify kids. Who need the help. And it was very encouraging and fantastic job. David, Joe, anything to add? Okay, with that, our next meeting is going to be April seventeenth at seven PM. It will be virtual and anyone is encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Thanks for that great report. Any comments or questions? No? All right, well, thank you again. All right, next we have our new health, wellness and safety committee. Rosetta?
Yeah, so that right now there is nothing, no informational items and no action items to report. The, the, the school or the, the district wellness meeting still hasn't been. Scheduled. I'm still waiting to hear that be scheduled. And then the new committee. I'm not sure how that starts.
But we'll discuss getting a date on the calendar for your first meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Great. All right, any comments or questions?
I think one thing is worth noting is that the topic of later school start times, which for the last, you know, couple of years or so has been within. Or under the umbrella of the communications committee, that's one key, key item that'll be moving into the health. Wellness and Safety Committee going forward. So Rosetta will have, will have the opportunity to lead all that fun work.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none. Now we'll move on to our report of board representatives, extracurricular, Marshall.
Thank you, Amy. We did have an extracurricular committee meeting on March eighth. Where we discussed both the start of sports in March. As well as the approval of certain activities, including the Future Realtors Club Unified Theater, Tic Tacto. Tic Tacto, not Tik Tok, Tic Tacto, Boys Volleyball and the Dialogue and Current Issues Club. As a side note, the Boys Volleyball Team, which just started as a sport in the high school. A juggernaut already won their first match and we want to congratulate.
Undefeated.
For that. So congratulations to them as well as the other teams that are now up and running. There were several other proposals for other activities and there will be more to come on those once we've finalized them.
Great, thanks, Marshall. Any comments or questions?
I, I actually have a question for our student board reps. Are you guys familiar and aware with of the Tic Tacto Club?
I have not heard of it as of now. Have you?
I have also not heard of it. I actually, I want to find out about it. I don't, I want to know what's happening with it. Maybe join. I'm not too good at Tic Tacto, but.
We'll get better.
It's a non-contact. Activity, so ask your friends and neighbors. There's, there's a buzz around it, so.
Any other comments or questions? All right, next to the MCIU report, and I don't have anything to report since our last meeting. North Monaco Technical Career Center.
Well, things are going very well at North Monaco. They've just added three new programs, service occupation, property maintenance. And a social media digital marketing class. The JOC approved the budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. And they want to publicize the car show on April twenty-second. So everybody come out to the car show. And our next meeting is April twenty-sixth.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, thanks again. PSBA liaison, Dan?
I have nothing right now.
All right, thank you. All right, and we've reached our second public comment period. Which can be on any school-related topic. As a reminder, we allow maximum of five speakers on any particular topic. Please limit comments to three minutes and note that that supports practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we will follow up responses on the district's website. I mean, you approach, please state your name and municipality of residence and the topic you will be speaking about. All right, we have one speaker, Pramina.
So Katie, before you begin, I'm here today because. Twice in the last four months, I participated, I listened virtually. And I was abruptly cut off again twice your starting clock, so this is really pissing me off, but okay. So I'm here because I've been cut off on the phone, off of. Your Zoom. And most recently, a municipal candidate for county office. Told some people in the community that Wissahicken hates me. So this is not the third or fourth time in the community, my name has been maligned. From this district. So today I just wanted to come and share that with you. I wanted to reintroduce myself. I became a student in this district in nineteen eighty-one. I graduated in nineteen eighty-nine. My son graduated in two thousand and twelve. My mother graduated in nineteen fifty and my mother was inducted in the Sports Hall of Fame in nineteen ninety-one. After I graduated from Wissahicken, the high school principal. Asked me to come back to the high school to mentor young girls because I became a young teen, a young mother. And I offered myself to them. I've been actively engaged in this school district since nineteen eighty-one. I want to read you a statement that's on your website about the Wissahicken Alumni Association. It says, the Wissahicken Alumni Association was in operation from nineteen eighty-six to two thousand and three. And then it was discontinued from two thousand and four to two thousand and twelve. It was reinstated in two thousand and twelve until fif- two thousand and fifteen, becoming defunct again. Alumni activities are currently organized with the Higgin High School and the Wissahicken School District Communications Department. Wade, I'd like to know if I could, do I have to do a right-to-know request? To find out the accuracy of that timeline because I've been around forever. And when I brought it to the board in two thousand and twelve, to my knowledge and everyone else at that time, there had been no iteration of. A formal Wissahicken Alumni Association. Why that becomes relevant is because defunct means that it doesn't exist and it's not functioning. We have created, reinstated the Wissahicken Alumni Association. It exists and it functions. On April twenty-eighth of this year, we will be having our third iteration of the Black Hall of Fame. So the Black Hall of Fame is a subject of what we are calling, what we've established. As the Wissahicken Alumni Association. I find it completely disrespectful. That the district would indicate that this does not exist and it's not functioning. Um, I sat here today and I really didn't want to come here and be negative. Because I don't, it's not about being negative. I just want to recite the facts. And I think what's really important here is that we get in the right frame of functioning. Because I'm not going anywhere and I am indebted, I am committed to this school district. So I will talk to Wade tomorrow about these other things. I have three questions that I'd like to answer.
Since we are beyond the, the time, could you possibly email those over to Wade and you can copy the.
Okay, so here's the thing, Amy. I have two other questions. It's going to take thirty seconds. Excuse me, Mr. Salinette. Oh, I don't remember your name.
I, Kami, we are past the three minutes. Everyone is allowed three minutes. It's something you can email to the board.
I asked not for the time to start when I mentioned why I was not, why I was here.
The time starts when you begin speaking and goes three minutes and we're past the three minutes.
So I'm the only person here. Like, are you serious?
We do this with all speakers. I gave you some leeway beyond the three minutes.
But I asked for my initial comments, not to be part of my public comments because I had to.
All of your comments, all your comments were public.
This is, this is really disrespectful. It's important that I ask these questions publicly. So what I will do is I will email you guys, but I want to make sure they get put on the website. Because the three other questions that I, or the two other questions I have are relevant and I want to call you tomorrow and work on this. Your website is inaccurate. It needs to be changed and I will continue to speak out.
Thank you, Pramina. Katie, is there anyone registered online?
There are no raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, then we will move on to board comments. Do any of my fellow board members have any comments this evening? No, I will just mention, I want to thank Wissawon for including me in their meeting last week. And I would like, if we could, Jim, our committee meeting, if we could let the board presidents know the age of days. They mentioned that they would share them out with their membership. Perhaps some members of the community would like to come to like our budget workshop or any of our committee meetings.
These list of dates?
Yeah, if we could share that out, that would be great. Because they, I think they offered that they would share that out. Any other comments or questions? All right, then do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, motion to be made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Meeting adjourned.